I never talk.
Hello. If I can you speak, I'll smack.
Yes, we call. You started laughing at us, then we said to you.
You got some. Ron still needs to sign on. Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the special council meeting, which is our 2012 meeting to order for December 13th, 2010. First thing as always is determination of a quorum and roll call, if you would, Charlene.
Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis. Hadcock. Kroger. Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Waugh.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Just a couple reminders. If you do have a cellphone, we'd ask that you either turn that off or put it into the vibrate mode. We'd certainly appreciate that. Also, if you do get a phone call this evening and you do need to take it, we would ask that you would please go ahead and just exit the room out front there so you're not disturbing everyone else in the meeting. We certainly appreciate that. We also have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, our right, over on the media table. If you wish to speak tonight, we would request that you actually fill it out, put your name on there, and the item you wish to speak to. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure that we do not overlook you. We are going to, even though this is a special council meeting, we will be treating this as a 2012 meeting. And as such, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the council president, Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have four items on the agenda this evening, and I think what we're going to do is we're going to take some presentations on a couple of these projects, also listen to public input, and then I think we'll have discussion and then go from there. So, the first item on it is on the agenda is 2012 funding request for the Roosevelt Park Fieldhouse. Jerry, do you have a presentation or anything to give us?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of city council. Thanks a lot for having us back again. Our presentation deals with the Roosevelt Community Center, the area between the swimming pool and the ice arena. The original project, if you remember, was we asked for $4.875 million, which included two gymnasiums and a fieldhouse area. On the second floor included a track. Then we talked, discussed about $3 million, reducing that and what could that buy. For $3 million, we would still get the same two gymnasiums and the same rooms that we were including on the original presentation. We just wouldn't get the fieldhouse portion over by the ice arena. We'd still get the elevated track around the two basketball goals. If we were to get this facility in the future, what we would do is we would probably bring the recreational budget and the swimming pool budget in together. These are the two budgets as they stand and proposed for 2010. As you can see, we're about a 56% return on both of those budgets. With the new gymnasium facility, we expect to increase expenditures, about $200,000 for that building. That includes the heat, light, electricity, janitorial services. On the low side, projected revenues of $100,000 would give us about a $100,000 deficit that we would add to the city's general fund budget. On the high side, however, we figure that we could do somewhere in the neighborhood of about $200,000, $220,000, which would actually reduce that deficit a little bit. We feel that we can be within those two areas with this facility. We can make, by adding just 50 new pass holders, we bring in about $50,000. So, you know, we can make half of that up with just adding new pass holders with this facility. And we know we're going to get new pass holders because now we have more to offer. We'll have another multipurpose room. We can rent that out, indoor playground, expandable recreational leagues that we have right now in our community centers at South and West, which are totally filled. We can't, we can't put any more people in those buildings in the wintertime. We can add tournaments into this facility. We would now have three different facilities, the west, the south, and this facility, that we could start bringing in youth tournaments into the city. We could create more recreational programs right now in summertime and wintertime. We don't have any place for indoor recreational programming classes, those type of things. Our recreational programming takes place in a picnic shelter in Canyon Lake Park. That's where our summer programs take place, a lot of them. So, by adding this, we feel that we can increase those programs. We could have expanded fitness classes because, as I said, right now we have one multipurpose room, and that room is booked. We could add more fitness classes for our instructors if we had another room because the contract instructors and the contract programs pretty much take up all the prime time in the multi-fitness room right now. And I know that we have taken away some of their time, which makes their business not grow. And I think Doug's here, and he'll probably explain some of that. Increase pass sales, which I stated, increase concession sales with more people in the building. We're going to have more concessions that we're going to sell. We figure that we can bring in 50,000 to 100,000 more people into that facility a year by adding those gymnasiums and the extra rooms that we're talking about, the multipurpose rooms, indoor playground, et cetera. That's what we get for $3 million. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Jerry. Just hold on here. We'll take some comments or questions from the committee first here. We'll go to Sam Quaker.
Thank you. Jerry, my question is this. Inside the Roosevelt Swimming Pool, which is very nice, by the way, but the ceiling of the Roosevelt complex is a lot of fancy woodwork. And what I'm wondering, you know, most of the swimming pools and facilities like that that I've seen have just the gymnasium-type rafters, and so they're a lot less expensive. And so, my question to you is, as we move forward with, you know, this project, I mean, are we, are we looking at items like that in terms of trying to, to cut those types of options out and try to save dollars wherever we can and still have a functional facility?
Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess the greatest thing in an auditorium area, the swimming pool area, because of the chlorine and chloramines in there, metals erode quite quickly. And that's one of the reasons you see the glue lamps up on the ceilings. They hold up better in that type of a climate. In the gymnasium area, I would expect that you would see some sort of roofing like the community centers would have, those type of things. But, you know, that's going to be up to the architect. I would, I would rather put more expense into the gym floors and into the multipurpose room floors, those type of amenities, and still have a good ceiling. But I think you could, you could probably go the gamut. I don't think we're going to get glue lamps. Like you said, they're more expensive than the classic I-beam, steel I-beams that go through. And you don't need to glue wood beams in a gymnasium because you don't have the corrosion factor from the auditorium.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Go to Deb Hadcock.
Jerry, what was the total cost of the fieldhouse?
The portion that we took out of this project?
Right. What are you asking for at this point for the fieldhouse?
We recommended $3 million. The original cost, Jerry, was about 4.8, you said?
4.875 was the original, and then it was reduced to $3 million.
Correct.
But the social center, the adult social center, is there any way that you can do a combination of putting both of those together, of duplicated services that are duplicated rooms that could be used for both? That might, in this case, I don't, I don't, that's probably not a fair question, but it seems like some of these rooms could be used for some of the adult social center things that they were doing, and maybe we could do some type of combination with what you're doing here?
Jerry.
I think if you go back to the original proposal, the $4.75, $8.75 million building that added the indoor soccer area, those type of things, there was extra buildings on there. And I think those rooms could be utilized. But in this scaled-down version, you know, there are going to be programs going on there. And I think if the senior center was, was ever built, they could, they could buy group passes to utilize those areas, yes.
Thank you. I just think when I'm looking at these adult social center and the Roosevelt Park Fieldhouse, that I see some duplicated things that we could do together that might make this project fit with, or the social center fit with the fieldhouse, which would be more of a combination thing. So, it seems like a win-win situation there. It would cost the 4.8, but it would give the services that the two, like Minnalucahan and the Canyon Lake doesn't have, and then also be able to add some of the things that we needed at the fieldhouse. But that's just something throwing in out there after reading some of the business plans and different things. It seems like something we might be able to think about doing. Thank you.
Is there any other questions from the committee, Jerry Cole? Being none, thank you, Jerry. We do have one speaker, two speaker request forms. First one is Doug Langworthy. Doug?
Mr. President and members of council, thank you for hearing me. My name is Doug Langworthy. I am the owner, operator, and head instructor of the largest martial arts school in western South Dakota. And I'm here to speak for the new building. We have been renting the facility that we're using now since it opened in 2004. And we have over 100 students in our school. And we formerly were at the YMCA and moved out of the YMCA back in about 2000 and been kicking around ever since. And in June 2004, we moved in, and we've been using the facility there. And it's really borderline for what we use as far as size. We've had to limit the number of students. We can't hold our seminars there. We can't hold tournaments. We actually quit holding karate tournaments because there wasn't a facility that was close that we could really use. We rented the ice arena one year when it was closed for fixing. And then we used one of the, the community centers for one of our tournaments. But the hassle of having to move all of our equipment back and forth, we just decided it wasn't worth the effort. So, we, you know, we're not renting that, spending the money for those facilities anymore. Our rent is about $10,000 a year is what we pay in rent. We use the room on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. And like I said, I've had to cap my class because I don't have enough, there isn't enough time to have more, and the room is maxed. We can't put any more students in. And we can't have any more time because of the other contract people that are there, the dance instructors and everything else. So, there's just no other times for us to use, use the room. And part of the problem is, we have, of course, all the students, but then their parents, too. And the parents get there, and there is really nothing for the parents to do except sit. And so, that's, that's another thing with, there's no walking track. There's, they could go swimming, I suppose, but, but other than sitting there and watching their kids, there's really nothing for them to do. I guess, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. That's, that's really, I'm all for the building of the building.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for Doug? There's none. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Next speaker request form is from Ron Sassel.
I just actually wanted to touch on my thoughts, looking from the outside, on, on the three projects. And one concern that, that I did have, you know, a lot of the building that we're doing is also in the floodplain. And thought crossed my mind, one, whether or not the city does have adequate flood insurance if something catastrophic was to happen. So, you know, that said, but the, I believe that the pool, which is the third project on the list, I think that is very important. One of the things also looking at, I think the idea of trying to phase two projects together is great if it can happen, and looking at trying to save, save money in the long run. The Horace Mann Pool, and I know the discussion is on the 50 lap, and where, I really believe that, that North Rapid needs that still. That's something that I believe is important. And then, the senior center, as a matter of fact, today I had a call for somebody looking for, had a relative with Alzheimer's, and looking for supports. Looking at the two, at the three projects, personally, I feel the senior center and the pool are probably the two most prominent and most important. And that's, that's just my feeling. The fieldhouse, I believe, is, is a great project, but at the same time, when you look at the money and you look at the resources within the city, I think it's basically more closing, closing in on competing with the why. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there any other comments regarding the Roosevelt Park Fieldhouse from the audience? If not, we'll go to item number two, which is the funding request for the Adult Social Resource Center. Patty, did you have some comments to make first?
No, we don't have a presentation. We are certainly available for questions to the council. I understand you all have the new business plan. Have any questions on that one, sir? We try to answer it the best we can.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're going to go to speaker comments. And the first one on this item is John Boone. John?
Thank you for having us up here. My name is John Boone. I'm on the board at Canyon Lake Senior Center. And I'm speaking for the center in a way, but also as a citizen, and speaking against the proposal, as before you, for the senior center. There was a meeting held at Canyon Lake Senior Center on last Tuesday. It was an open meeting. It generated a lot of input. A lot of people came. The general feeling I got at that was that there was a lot of opposition to the current plan. And I assume you all have that document showing the floor plans and all that sort of thing. I got into that early, at one of the early presentations, so I had it when a lot of people didn't have it and had been studying it and so forth. All parties were represented at this meeting, including Daisy House, Canyon Lake Senior Center, Minnalucahan, some other interested people. A lot of the talk went back and forth on what this thing would actually be. I hate to say this, but I kind of, kind of get a feeling maybe that a few of you don't understand senior centers too well, like jamming it into the fieldhouse and multi-works and things. It doesn't work too well that way. But at this meeting, I understood that basically we all agreed to go back to zero and start this discussion again. There are a lot of questions with the floor plans. In my estimation, Minnalucahan doesn't come off any better in the new building than it did in the past in the old one. They may have a different view of that. You're putting 200, 250 people on the third floor of a senior center. In case of fire, that just stirs my blood. I just can't imagine what's going to happen, people like me limping down the stairs when there's a fire down below. The kitchen's on that same level. The whole building really is a narrow, upright structure, which it seems to me doesn't fit the cause of either one of the groups that are going to be in it. And let me emphasize that, in my mind at least, the original plan tries to jam two different functions into the same little building. Senior services is quite a different concept than senior centers. There might be a little over, overlocking between the two. There might be some synergy, but there isn't an awful lot. The senior services building could actually be built virtually anyplace by itself. It would have more room, I think, than the floor plan indicates. And I think it would be a much better idea to do it that way. The senior center, it seems to me, is just totally inadequate the way it is structured. And I don't think that it is feasible in any, any real way. So, what we really came out with, I thought, at that meeting, was that all the interested parties were going to sit down and start from zero, draw up new plans. We could either do two different plans for the different uses, put them together later on, or whatever we wanted. But that we were going to start over on this thing. Hopefully, it's dead, and that we can really begin from the beginning once again and clean up a lot of the misconceptions and a lot of the bad planning, in my opinion, that's been shown in the plan that's before you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker request forms from Ron Rowland.
Thank you. I'm a past president of the Canyon Lake Senior Center, and I also attended the meeting John referred to earlier, as well as we were very pleased that Dave Davis, Ron Wyffenbach, Bill Waugh, and Gary Brown were at that. So, they've got some firsthand information from the comments that were there. John has covered it pretty good, except just a couple of things I want to add to it. Some of the questions that still remain to be answered as far as we were concerned is how much is the annual cost going to be this for staffing, maintenance, utilities? Who's going to share what part of that sort of thing? If Minnaluca is a part of this plan, what are you going to do with the Minnaluca facility as it sets now today? There's all kinds of rumors going out there. The main one is you want to tear it down, make a parking lot. True or not, we'll find out. Again, why would senior citizens be on the third floor, especially if there's no elevator included in this sort of thing? What would be the impact on Canyon Lake Senior Center? We do not necessarily oppose parts of the project, but again, there's going to be some impact there, which apparently nobody has stopped talking with us about. Maybe the two senior centers should be combined. I don't think any, either center wants that. But we want to work together as best we can with the money you have available. Speaking for myself, I do not think this project should be approved as you currently have it until we have some time to sit down with all the parties involved and make it a unified plan rather than Minnaluca plan, Canyon Lake plan, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next speaker request form is from Shirley Allen.
Thank you again for listening to me. I want to clear one thing up. It is not a senior center. It is an adult resource center. Somewhere along the way, in all of this discussion between the two senior centers, the whole project has been lost. That's really sad to me because I deal with the families that could not come and support us here tonight. I deal with those that go home, again, as I said before, that have 24-hour care, and still have kids in kindergarten that are caring for a 91-year-old. Those are the ones we are talking about. We're not talking about the people that attend the dances at either senior center. Please consider this project as an adult resource center. And again, we did give you all the information that we feel that you had asked for from us. I do want to thank the senior centers for looking into the projects again and wanting to go back to the, to the board. But my question is, are they ever going to agree? I don't know that. I'm new in this community. We moved here as new retirees, or soon will be. And it's just sad for me to see that this has become between two senior centers when it was never started out to be that way at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Next speaker request form is from Kim Huer. Next speaker request form is from Kim Hewer.
Hi, my name is Kim Hewer. This is my daughter Laura, who goes to Daisy House. I also have a father who has the beginning stage of Alzheimer's. Right now, he does attend Canyon Lake Senior Citizen Center, and does some carving there. Soon, he won't be there, because he won't be able to drive, and they don't have a bus service to come get him. It is sad that it's become between two senior citizen centers. But neither of those facilities will take my daughter and teach her living skill. Neither of those facilities will be able to give my father medication, because I have to work to support my family. Neither of those centers will take my daughter and teach her the things she needs. Right now, between Daisy House and, and as they're proposing this as an adult facility, we have kids from age 13 to 21 that pair with the elderly. We can't do that at the senior citizens' facilities. I understand some of their concerns that they have. We're not trying to take anything from them. What we're trying to do is build this community, because we are an aging community, and make it a better place for everybody, so that those of us that are in that sandwich generation can take care of our families and take care of our parents. My parents moved up here two years ago, because they used to RV full-time, and due to my dad's health, can't do that. Out of the three siblings, I am the only one who is even remotely able to take care of them, had facilities in the area that I knew would be able to facilitate my parents as they get older. Both of them have had bouts with cancer. I have to know that they're taken care of. I can't take and drop them off at Canyon Lake and expect them to give my dad his heart medicine when he needs it. There's no one there to monitor him. And then, when my daughter gets out of school, because of the nine-year gap we have of no daycare for special needs kids, and Black Hills Workshop doesn't take them until they're 21, what am I supposed to do with her? I have right now a place that takes her, teaches her cooking skills. She goes to the elderly. She gives them their drinks. She gives them their muffins that she baked. She takes care of them. She paints her fingernails. They read to her. We have a very unique blend between the elderly and the special needs. I really, really need you guys to understand, this isn't just about activities for seniors. It's about a multipurpose area for the younger and the elderly, a blend, where otherwise they have no place to go. They have started so many projects in this community that has benefited so many special needs kids, that nobody else takes. It took me two years, and that's with all the help I could get from every resource I could, to get my daughter accepted into Girls Inc. for after-school, or for when I can take her. But when they're not there, I have nobody. I have to have some place. And I don't think taking her to Canyon Lake or having the bus drop her off, they're not going to know what to do with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next speaker request form is from Patty Martinson.
Yes, thank you. Wanted to address concerns brought up by the Canyon Lake members. One of the issues is, as far as the third floor and the difficulty people would have reaching that, that is a design issue, and that's certainly to be worked on, to help improve access. Would like to point out that this was designed for perhaps the more active, able, senior communities, so that might be not a big an issue. There certainly can be elevators, that'd be more than sufficient to help people reach the third floor. And as far as the issue of a nonprofit center could be located anywhere, I want to remind the council, this is a, one project that is supposed to benefit the city, the nonprofits, as well as the community, in one location. Not separate locations, but in one location, that would be less expensive than trying to separate all into different projects and only funding one. This is to benefit the city, because of its location, to help feed the ice arena and the swim center, to help the nonprofits find a less expensive place to expand their businesses. And as the community, as a more central location than the Canyon Lake Senior Center, which is, of course, located on the far end of one side of the city. And it'd certainly be a challenge to me, just to get to Canyon Lake myself, and would imagine for a number of senior citizens as well. So, the new center would be a more central location than Canyon Lake. It would provide a good space for nonprofits, and would directly benefit the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. That's the last of the speaker request forms for item number two. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Bob Heller. I'm from the Canyon Lake Senior Center. And I'd like to point out that we have nothing against, nothing against the Daisy House. The Daisy House facility is a wonderful project, and I've been able to observe some of the patients that they handle. However, the Resource Center is a facility that the Canyon Lake Center has all of the things that the Resource Center was going to provide outside of a psychiatrist, and we are self-supporting. And our cost, on a daily basis, is about 750 bucks. That's just to open the doors. And I think you have a small letter, a three-minute letter, on your computers that I had presented to the meeting that we had. And, however, the whole thing just seems to be way out of line, as far as expenses are concerned, to the taxpayers of Pennington County. And this is the one reason that we don't think we should support this adult resource center, in the manner that it's been presented to us at this time. Maybe in the future, the, the combination of the Resource Center and the Canyon Lake Center could be combined, and something could develop out of that. At this point in time, that's all I have to say. It needs to be studied much further, before presenting anything in the way of a financial program. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there any other comments from the audience?
I think there is a misconception that...
State your name and everything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Joanne Sutton. I happen to be a member of Minnalucahan Senior Citizen Center. I happen to be on the board of Minnalucahan Senior Citizen Center. But one of the most important roles I play is a citizen of Rapid City, South Dakota. And I really am serious. There is a misconception, or I shouldn't say misconception. We at Minnalucahan, I don't think it occurred to us to mention, we are also very self-supporting. We have, we do get a grant from United Way for $12,000 a year. We get subsidy from the city. But other than that, we are supported by our fundraisers. We have a pancake breakfast the second Sunday of every month. We have suppers at our, at our location. We have, we have about 624 members who pay dues. So we're really, maybe not completely self-supporting, if you take, you know, if you take into account the subsidies that we get. But we are a beautiful, wonderful, caring facility. We do have everything that a senior center are, right now, for activities. We're looking to the future, when we might, when we'll get the baby boomers involved. And they don't, they, we're thinking, would rather look at something like our adult resource center, where there are a lot of different things, real convenient. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Any other comments from the audience? Patty, I'll let you go one more time.
Thank you very much. I would like to point out that the Canyon Lake, they can participate in this adult resource center right now. We have, we, for the plan, this would be appointing a board of directors with a CEO. Canyon Lake is more than welcome to participate as part of that board of directors, and they can help manage the adult resource center. They can also certainly work with us as far as any design concerns, and any issues of that nature. As far as the Daisy House relocating to the Canyon Lake, I would assume, I want to speak for the Daisy House, but I would assume there would be some expense, as far as adapting whatever location in Canyon Lake to suit the Daisy House needs, so as not, they can simply set up shop right now. There would be probably some expense, and I do not know if Canyon Lake has envisioned or planned for that possibility.
Thank you, Patty. Is there any questions or anything at this time from the committee? Being none, next item on the agenda is the request for, 2012 funding request for the tank pool. Jerry, do you have anything to present on that or not? Okay. With that, we'll go to the speaker request forms, and the first one's Mike Los.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I guess I'd first like to thank the 2012 Committee and, and this body for their leadership in making a priority, the 50-meter lap pool. Something like a lap pool is a little bit hard to justify, sometimes dollars and cents-wise, but I think it really does separate our community, as having a commitment to recreation and fitness. And I think the room is filled with young people and their parents, who will benefit, not just now, but for the rest of their lives. These little guys that get up earlier than they'd want to, maybe work harder than they'd want to, will learn, as they get older, that there is great benefit in the discipline, and certainly the fitness that comes with being involved in the swimming program. And Rapid City is a, a great swimming town, and this decision that the council is about to make really separates us. It really does, from a standpoint of being a swimming community. The 50-meter program separates our town from most, in that it will allow some additional opportunities for the meets and such. The idea of where to, where to put the pool, if that's, if that's the worst choice that we have, we're in a very fortunate position. But I'd like to speak on behalf of making all efforts to combine a leisure pool on Anamosa with the 50-meter pool up at the present location. There is something very unique and very special about the Horseman location. I believe there are credible plans that would allow a very useful leisure component with zero depth and, and play features, if you will, that will be used by the community, is greatly needed by the community. I think everyone would agree with that. But if at all possible, I think that trying to keep the 50-meter pool there is, is important. Certainly, I'm a, I'm a big supporter of the Roosevelt area. I volunteer at the swim center. I've got two young kids. We use the Horseman Pool, we use the swim center. But count me among the folks that would like to see the 50-meter pool stay up there.
Thank you, Mike. Next speaker request form is from Michelle Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and honorable members of the city council. My name is Michelle Hoffman, and I am the vice president of the Rapsi Racers. I am here as the official spokesperson for the Racers. The Racers is a local nonprofit operated solely, solely for the benefit of the young swimmers that you see present today. The Racers have currently over 75 youths swimming with our program. And we're growing significantly. Many of these swimmers, I said, are here, along with their parents, to support the building of a 50-meter competitive pool. And that's why we're here. We are strong advocates for the building of a 50-meter competitive pool. There have been two locations proposed for the building of this 50-meter pool, the current Horseman location, as well as Roosevelt Park. Both have merit. Therefore, the Racers are not taking any position as to where the pool should be built. We are simply here to emphasize that the pool should be built. However, this is a decision that will be decided by the honorable council members. So I want to address the possibility that you may choose to separate the leisure pool project from the tank pool project. In the event that you do vote to separate these two projects, and that you vote to place the tank pool at the Roosevelt site, we would request that the tank pool be built first, for the following reasons. One, it is, Rapid City has the only, the only 50-meter pool in western South Dakota. This pool hosts one to two competitive meets each summer, having a significant impact, economic impact, on area businesses. The Racers are currently slated to host the 2011 Summer State Long Course Championships, where over 400 swimmers will participate. The hosting of this meet may be deferred, depending upon construction schedules. But, again, having 400 swimmers and their families come to this community in July, and probably extend their vacation, does have a significant economic impact on this community. In fact, as a side note, Aberdeen is the only other pool in South Dakota that has a quality competitive meet. They have currently attempted to secure the state bid meet for every summer from here to foreseeable future. If we can get this, this pool built, we can arguably host the summer meet every other year. The third reason I would advocate the tank pool taking priority is this. The current Horseman facility may continue to serve the citizens of Rapid City and the Horseman community while the new tank pool is being built. Fourth, if we build the leisure pool first, and again, all this is only given if you choose to separate. We are not taking any position. We simply want the pool built. But if you build the leisure pool first, we're looking at the better part of at least two years, where there will be no competitive pool, 50-meter pool, in western South Dakota. Finally, again, if you choose to separate these projects, and you choose to place the 50-meter pool at the Roosevelt site, by building the tank pool first, we can better minimize the disruption of services to the citizens of Rapid City, as well as to the interested parties that are here again tonight. But again, I really want to emphasize, the Racers, we're only here as strong, strong advocates of building a 50-meter pool. We're taking no position as to where that location should be, and simply defer to your judgment as to where you feel it would best be suited. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Michelle. Next speaker request form is from Todd Schwager.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm just a private citizen who's interested in the Horseman Pool and its location. I use the Horseman Pool in the summer twice, three times a week. My wife uses it five to seven times a week. So, we know our way there. I could rhapsodize about the location of the pool as it sits, there, kind of atop that knoll, with a beautiful view of the hills, but that's not going to change anybody's opinion about where the pool should be located, I believe. Although, I think a tank pool and a zero-depth pool can exist side by side there. But I must admit, a lot without millions probably of dollars worth of, of dirt work, you're not going to be able to save the Pony League ball field, put a tank pool in there, and put a zero-depth pool in as well, and have any place for anybody to park. So something's got to go. And of course, that's the... And of course, that's the dilemma before this committee, the city council, what goes? I advocate for the Pony League field to go. The Pony League field is not in the greatest location there. It abuts against the backyards of numerous homes. If you've noticed the netting that's up there to prevent home runs and fly balls from going into neighboring people's yards, that's quite an investment on the part of the Pony League to keep those balls out of their yards. It has not had any improvements probably since it was built. And that to me shows a lack of commitment on the part of maybe the Pony League, but the council as well, because I know for a matter of fact, when I was on the Pony League Board back 10, 11 years ago, there were repeated requests for funding for a new Crows Nest snack bar and new bleachers for that park, for that ball field, that were repeatedly rejected by the city. So I don't see the city as having a great commitment to this location either. I think that it needs improvement. And I believe there are other places in the community where another Pony League field can be built with those improvements and with enough room where a fly ball or a home run won't end up breaking a window out. Two examples, College Park, they have a basic ball field there that could be transformed into a more finished ball field. Or actually just west of Roosevelt Park, there's also an undeveloped ball field right there that could be increased right along the bike path. So those are just two ideas and of course, funding could be shared by the city and by Pony League. Finally, as far as pool locations, Roosevelt has got a lot of facilities that are already in place, plus you're talking about another one with a couple of additional, or a couple of basketball and running track. How much can you stick in that spot? And something that I don't think has been brought up, that is in a floodplain. So when you lose Roosevelt Park, how much are you going to put up losing? Leave the tank pool up on the hill by Horace Mann, build the zero-depth pool there and move the Pony League field. That's my request and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Todd. Next speaker request form is from Chris Green.
Thank you, Mr. President and council for having me here tonight. Chris Green, I'm a professional engineer. I'm also a USA Swimming certified coach and I have about 32 years with aquatics facilities. First like to express my sincere appreciation to all the Vision 2012 committee members, Rapid City Parks and Recreation Department advisory boards and Rapid City council for their hard work on this project. We're in a fortunate position that we're even talking about a 50-meter pool today. We have a funding mechanism to fund it and, you know, it's, 50-meter pools are an extremely rare commodity. I'm specifically going to discuss the competition pool, the 50-meter pool portion of the project. I would reiterate the comments of prior speakers that this is an absolutely critical project for the future of 110 competitive swimmers in the city of Rapid City and furthermore, 1,454 competitive swimmers in the state of South Dakota. In short, its importance cannot be overstated. To provide some context, again, there's only seven 50-meter pools, 50-meter competition pools in the state of South Dakota, including the one that's at Horace Mann now. The next closest 50-meter pool's in town of Mitchell. You know, I think the reality of it is, is this 50-meter pool has the potential to be the premier 50-meter long course pool in the state of South Dakota. It could be an invaluable resource to current and future generations of Rapid City swimmers, the city of Rapid City and the Black Hills region at large. And my view, it all takes is will and vision. I recommend that this pool be designed and constructed to standards to host not only the South Dakota long course championship meets, that was discussed earlier, but also central zone championship meets. South Dakota is part of USA Swimming Central Zone, which is comprised of 14 states. And this may all sound very expensive to you, but the reality of it is, with the proper design, and I'll get into that in a minute, I think it's all integral with the rest of the design. We have the leader, the potential to be the leader and foremost destination for swimming in the state of South Dakota. And imagine the positive message it would send to the youth of the Black Hills to host a meet of this caliber. And again, to go back to South Dakota long course championship meet, that's typically 400 swimmers, 1,600 meet participants, and a central zone championship meet is 700 swimmers and 2,800 meet participants. Realize upfront that the budget is tight. We've got four and a half million dollars of total, 2.3 million dollar on the leisure side, 2.2 million dollar on the 50-meter competition side. So what do we do with that? Well, as of this moment, the 2008 Olympic trial warm-up pool is available from Poseidon Swim Club in Virginia. That is essentially about a 1.4, 1.5 million dollar pool in value that's currently on sale for $900,000. This is a state-of-the-art pool. It's used in the highest level competitions in this country. It's sold as a package. We've also have verbal confirmation from Murtha, who's the manufacturer, that if need be, they would also provide the city of Rapid City, you know, this is about a 40% discount from their normal price, either a competition-style pool or a warm-up-style pool. And basically, I left the drawings under my chair, but basically, the difference is a competition-style pool is a rectangular style and a warm-up-style pool's rectangular with a bump out for warm-up, warm-down, which is a requirement under USA Swimming for hosting a meet of this caliber. The other thing that I would warn individuals about as far as the leisure pool is, there's a lot of, at least in the media, there's a lot of comparisons to the Jimmy Hilton pool in Sioux Park, which was constructed for 3.4 million dollars in the year 2000. If we use an inflation-adjusted factor from 2000 to now, that cost is somewhere between 5.5 million and 7 million dollars. So, you know, we're, there is not money in the budget for constructing a pool that size on the leisure side. The last three outdoor aquatic centers built in South Dakota was the Aberdeen Aquatic Center for 7.4 million dollars in 2007, the Hillcrest Aquatic Center in Brookings and the Mitchell Aquatic Center. And in all three of those cases, they combined a 50-meter competition pool element with a leisure pool element on the same site. As far as Horace Mann Park versus Roosevelt Park, I think everyone should keep in mind that the reality of it is, is both locations are site-constrained. As a couple of people have mentioned, Roosevelt Park is located in the floodplain and that could pose an issue at some point. But, you know, the other thing to keep in mind is the Roosevelt Park location, there appears to be a lot of supporting infrastructure there with buildings, existing buildings with the swim center and so forth. But what I would state that, in my view, the swim center is aesthetically pleasing, but it's actually functionally deficient for large swim meets. It actually has a bit of a difficult time accommodating large numbers of swimmers. The infrastructure that exists there as far as locker facilities and concessions areas, those would actually have to be duplicated outside the building. I mean, there's, and as well as the pool equipment area. The existing facility would not be able to handle the loads in the building. And the parking lot on the east side of the site is very nice, but again, we have to keep in mind that this parking lot's going to, in the master plan, be shared under five different facilities, so there may be a little bit less there than meets the eye. As far as the Horace Mann Park views, I mean, all of us could speak for a long time on the views and it's, you know, in my view, it's an absolute jewel chosen very carefully by our forefathers and we would be wise not to underestimate the importance of the site. But the thing that we have to keep in mind is, it's not just the city of Rapid City. We're hosts to a lot of out-of-state teams, particularly in these higher-level meets where we'd have, you know, 14, you know, 13 out-of-state teams come to our city. This could potentially be the first time they've ever have exposure to the city of Rapid City. And, you know, as their host, we want to put our best foot forward and give them a glimpse of the best that the Black Hills have to offer. And in my view, I think you get a lot more of what the Black Hills have to offer from a Horace Mann site versus a Roosevelt Park site. I guess to conclude, I think both sites need additional unbiased analysis. In my view, the Horace Mann site should be preferred unless it's determined to be technically infeasible, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Last speaker request form we have is from Alice McQuaid.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for doing this. I'm Alice McQuaid and tonight I am doing my hat with the North Rapid Civic Association president. When this all first started, and some of you were here and some weren't, I mean, our North Rapid people came unglued, "You guys are taking our stuff" and da-da-da-da-da. But at our last month's meeting, as Ron Kroger knows, he was there too, we had Mayor Hanks come and Ron talked, and now they just want something left there. They're not going to argue about the 50-meter pool as long as these people are happy. We are wanting neighborhood stuff now, but we want something there. So I haven't, I had more calls before and this time around, we didn't have, I didn't have many calls, but those who did call said, "Let's just keep whatever we get. We don't want to argue with you guys on it." So we're going to be easy as long as you give us something. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak on this item?
Could we just walk you over that?
Okay.
I just want to make a couple of comments. I want to make sure everyone is clear. There's been a couple of comments, I think, that may have been a little bit misleading. Number one, that the fact that Roosevelt is in a floodplain, that is true. All of Roosevelt Park, all the buildings are in the floodplain, so is this, so is the civic center, so is Central High School, so is this CSAT building. Where you cannot build is in a hydraulic floodway. There's a world of difference between a hydraulic floodway and a floodplain. All you have to do to build in a floodplain is be one foot above the BFE. And so there is certainly available room throughout Roosevelt Park to actually build there. So quite honestly, that really shouldn't be part of the discussion because if indeed that was an issue, we should have never built the indoor aquatic center because that's really the same elevation within the hydraulic floodplain. The second thing, just to point out, up here you can actually see an aerial shot of Horace Mann Park. The entire park is three acres. Now, we haven't done any true design, but the one thing I will tell you is, if you actually look at the footprint of the building itself, of the pool itself, which is right here, it's about 33,000 square feet, so about two-thirds of an acre. If you actually read the document that I provided you, Jerry Cole states that a leisure pool similar to Sioux Park or really Parkview is going to take about three acres. The footprint will take about three acres. So in other words, that's how much room you actually need for a leisure pool. I'm not opposed, or quite honestly, if there would be room up there for both pools, that would be great, but what I'm telling you is, without removing that Pony League field, there's not room for both fields, or both pools up there. You cannot put a 50-meter and a leisure pool in that same location. There was also a comment about the Pony League field here that it's in somewhat of a disrepair. The reality of it is, we had folks about two years ago that wanted to put a lot of money in it. We had some folks that were willing to replace all the bleachers of Crows Nest. And I will tell you, the city of Rapid City asked them not to do it until we actually decided what was going to happen up at Horace Mann. It's not that they don't want it. It's not that they don't want to improve it. We asked them not to move forward with those improvements. That's why it's in the state that it's in. I will tell you, logistically, what probably makes the most sense is to look at building a 50-meter pool down at Roosevelt, leave this pool up. In the meantime, once the 50-meter pool is up and running, then you come in, you demo this pool and you put a leisure pool in here. I just, I've looked at this and the other thing, if you notice, there's actually contour lines in here. There's one here, there's one here, and there's one here. There's about a 20, from the back corner of the pool, it's about a 20-foot drop to this corner here. So you might as well figure that a lot of this site is unbuildable. See if I can clear this. This portion, right in here, without a tremendous amount of dirt work in retaining walls is not buildable because of the slope. So that shows you exactly how much you have left at Horace Mann Pool. I will tell you, city of Rapid City is very fortunate, and I think someone mentioned it, what a terrible position we're in and the fact that we can afford to build two pools. We can afford to build a tank pool and we can also afford to build the leisure pool. I will tell you that I do not support, and I know, I'm pretty sure that the neighborhood does not support removing that Pony League field. Thing to keep in mind is if we pull it out, it's another half million dollars to replace it somewhere else. That hasn't been figured in. Typical field without parking, without amenities, without concession stands, without restrooms, it's a quarter million dollars just for the field, then add probably another 100 to 250,000 dollars by the time you quit the parking. So that, if you're going to remove that Pony League field, you just added probably a half million dollars to the total cost of the project. So with that, stand by for any questions. Just thought it was very important to basically put that out, draw it out. The other thing I think is also very important, there's been a lot of folks that have mentioned, rightfully so, that they truly enjoy swimming laps up at Horace Mann Pool. A lot of folks have done that. What continues to be overlooked is, if we build a leisure pool with a similar design as Sioux Park and Parkview, there are four swimming laps, lanes in each one of those pools. You can, if we build a leisure pool up there, there will still be lap swimming at Horace Mann. It won't be 50 meters, it'll be a 25 yards, but go both to Sioux Park and also to Parkview and both of those have four lanes for lap swim. With that, you certainly be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any questions for the mayor? Hold on here. We'll go to Alderman Quaker.
Thank you. Mayor, this question would be there for you or Jerry Cole. If the 50-meter pool was built down at Roosevelt, it would start out as being an outdoor pool, but would it be, would it be built in such a way that it could be turned into an indoor pool later on, or is it the intent for it to be an outdoor pool permanently?
And I'm going to look to Jerry, but my understanding of the intent is it would be an outdoor pool only. We do have a 25-yard lap pool inside the aquatic center that can be used on a year-round basis, but the actual 50-meter pool would strictly be seasonal.
So then, follow-up question is, is if it was put down there, do we know what it would cost to design it in such a way so that a future council someday down the road could make it an enclosed facility if they wanted to?
I don't think we know what those costs are, but, you know, there again, what you need to do is design the footings for the pool itself to, so you could structurally put something up. I mean, we could certainly accommodate that.
Thank you.
Further comments? Bonnie Peterson.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if we need Mayor, Mr. Cole, or both. It seemed like, because that's one thing that I'm interested in, is for that location to have a nice leisure pool, kind of the equivalent of Sioux Park or Parkview. However, I don't think we have set aside that kind of money that would pay for one of that caliber, and so I'm concerned about that.
I'm going to go to Mr. Cole. My understanding during the presentation, that they felt because of the parking and so forth were actually in place, that they could build something similar to, say, a Parkview, maybe a little bit scaled back, but pretty much with all the amenities. And there again, keep in mind, we scale our pools based upon really the number of folks that we anticipate using it from a specific demographic area. Jerry? Jerry?
Yeah. That is correct. If you were to take a scaled-down leisure pool, you'd still have a zero-depth water, you'd still have a play, park area where there's showers and sprays, as well as your lap lanes, and probably one or two slides that would be very fun. It wouldn't be spread out as much, it'd be in the same footprint where Horace Mann is now if the fifty-meter pool was built at Roosevelt.
So Jerry, what I'm hearing is, you believe the 2.3 is enough to build a leisure pool?
Yeah, we ran the numbers, and we're pretty certain, depending on, again, when we bore down into the earth and find out what's going on down there with the shale, that could adjust some numbers, a couple hundred thousand dollars, so.
Okay. Well, one of my concerns is because we're saying on the one hand that it's going to be like Parkview and Sioux Park, but then, on the other hand, we're saying it's not going to be like that, so that's a concern.
Mayor.
What we're looking at is basically a little bit scaled down, it'll still pretty much have all the amenities, just the actual size of the footprint of the pool will probably be a little bit smaller. It'll still have the swimming lanes, it'll still have the zero depth, it'll still have the slides, but the overall size of the pool will probably be reduced because of, there wouldn't be as big a draw as, say, the Parkview area or Sioux Park. Sioux Park serves literally everybody on the west side of town. The Parkview serves everyone generally from Omaha Street to the south, and of course, that's a very growing neighborhood. And then this one, there again, I'm not sure if you didn't specifically measure it out, I'm not sure you'd see a whole lot of difference between the pools.
Okay. Another question I have was about, a gentleman spoke earlier about a competition pool paying more money to meet whatever the requirements are for a central zone, and I was wondering if you've looked at that and how much more money that would cost for the tank pool.
Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I always, I believe it's always been our intent to build a competition pool.
Okay.
Can you use the intermission as far as the one area?
Well, I don't know about the rules, but yeah.
Okay, so it would meet that requirement, that central zone league that he spoke about, as opposed to just what the state competition, because I think there might be some different levels?
I would think that we certainly want to take a look at what the requirements would be to build a pool that would be able to attract regional, not only statewide but regional competition.
Right.
I just can't imagine that there'd be that much more as far as additional costs, and the benefit as far as attracting those regional events would probably be certainly worth the additional investment.
Okay. And I just also wanted to thank all these great racers for working so hard on their competitions and getting up and working it every day, so thank y'all for coming.
I just wanted to say, the racers are committed not only to swimming and a healthy lifestyle, but these swimmers are good citizens. We actively promote our swimmers to go out and volunteer for our community. We have raised money for the Polar Plunge for Special Olympics. Many of our senior swimmers have volunteered at the Horace Mann School for Literature Night, Math Night, Turkey Bingo. Our swimmers on December 29th are going to be hosting one of our first Make-A-Splash events, and the purpose of that is to promote water safety, and I don't know if Kelly's here, how many swimmers are we going to be having from the boys' club?
We'll have fifty swimmers, twenty-five for each section. South Dakota School of Mines has donated in full-time, and our swimmers, as well as our coach, head coach Alan McCullough, assistant coach Autumn, will be providing the water safety.
So I just wanted to tell you that not only we're a completely independent nonprofit, but we are also here to give back to this community, and we take that very seriously, and our swimmers are just fantastic kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, swimmers. We appreciate that very much. As it's been said many times tonight, we're in a very interesting position, where most communities struggle with trying to figure out how to fund projects like this. We have to figure out where, and that's a pretty interesting and favorable position to be in. I have a very, very soft spot in my heart for the Horace Mann Park area. My wife taught at the adjacent school for eighteen years, so I know that area very, very well. It's very difficult for me, as I listen to the potential of either-or, and that's kind of where we're headed, I'm afraid, is an either-or. Either a leisure pool or a lap pool, or possibly a lap pool with a very minimal recreational facility attached to it, and that, I'm not very comfortable there. I think the north side deserves every bit of much of a pool as anywhere else in town. And I'm just going to say that as bluntly as I can. I'm going to work to make sure that that area, the Horace Mann Park, gets just as much of a pool as anywhere else in town. Now, I may be shooting myself in the foot in saying that because it may cost the lap pool to do that. It may mean that to get that full-fledged leisure pool at Horace Mann, it may force just simply because of the footprint that we need to go somewhere else with a lap pool. And I'm prepared to understand the consequences of the statement that I'm making, but I think it's very important that we look at that park as a potential for a full-fledged swimming facility in a leisure way. Swimmers, while I've got you here, and people with much more expertise than I, Alderman Quaker asked a question, and the mayor and Jerry kind of responded. From the research that I've done, I've got some information. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on it, and one of you semi-pro swimmers, please fill me in, make sure I'm right on this, but when the question was asked, could we put the footings in to make this pool an indoor pool at a later date? It's been my understanding that an indoor pool is a twenty-five-yard pool, and an outdoor pool is a fifty-meter pool, that, are there some fifty-meter pools indoor?
Yes.
Okay, so I was incorrect in that. Okay, I've been told that a couple times. I wanted to clarify that. So we could in fact have a fifty-meter indoor pool, correct?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So we clarified that. Thanks. Thank you, Sam. That's all I've got. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Dave. We'll go to Deb Hancock.
Just a couple of things. I'm trying to figure this out. We're going to downsize because we might not be able to do a lap pool and a leisure pool, but I thought this was one of the most, or one of the more important projects that we were going to do. I'm not into downsizing the project at all. If we're running out of space or something, I'd rather do a full-fledged leisure pool in North Rapid and the lap pool, which benefits all of Rapid City. It's not for the north side. So I would rather use the money that we have now, instead of doing another project or trying to fund other projects, of finishing this one up completely, because that's what happened before, is we did half a project. We ran out of money. So that doesn't make sense. For the taxpayers of Rapid City, it's beneficial to both, for a fifty-meter lap pool and a leisure pool. So if we have the money, I think we should finish the projects that we're doing first, and then any money left over, we could do the other two projects we have on the list. Because again, it's something that North Rapid has been waiting a long time for. I also grew up there. I think the location is good. I believe the leisure pool should be up in the area that it is, where the lap pool is now, with the baseball field staying there, and if we have cash flow, again, put a little bit of money into that baseball field. And then put the lap pool down by Roosevelt Pool, because me living in the middle of both those areas, I lived on Blaine Street, we went to both pools. We went to one because it was fun at Roosevelt sometimes, and then it was fun at the lap pool up by Roosevelt, or by Horace Mann. So again, I think those are two important issues. The lap pool needs to be finished like it's supposed to be, and the leisure pool should be full-fledged like the rest in Rapid City. So if we could, I guess that's where I'm going. Take the money we need to finish both, see what that money's left over, and then come back and tell others that we have extra. The other thing is, I guess we're talking about the lap pool, right? Not about the other projects at this point, Mr. Kroger? Again, I think it's a great idea. It's awesome that we have the lap pool coming up. It's something that North Rapid needs. It's a fifty-meter pool. It's something for Rapid City, not North Rapid. The leisure pool is for North Rapid. It's exciting. A lot of kids go up there. Again, been up there, have lots of friends still over there. It's awesome. So let's finish that up, let's see how much that's going to cost, then move on and see how much money we have left over. Instead of doing pieces and parts of projects, Fieldhouse, we were going to give three million, we might be able to give the adult social center some money. That doesn't make sense to me. Follow up with what we have, see what money we have left, and let's do it and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. We'll go to Jordan Mason.
Thank you. After reviewing this project, I actually feel quite the opposite, and in response to a comment that was made about this becoming an either-or, I don't see it that way. I see this as about retaining, as it was mentioned earlier, a jewel, and retaining a vision that our founding and the predecessors of our city saw. And I guess I feel very strongly that that is a viewpoint and provides people coming from the outside something beautiful to see. It shows a vibrant community up on the hilltop of the entrance of our city. And I think it's not just about retaining a pool in that location, it's also a symbolic representation of what our city represents. The other concern that I've heard is that this, the concerns of the floodplain shouldn't be a concern, and I respectfully disagree with that. I think the safety of our citizens, when we're attracting more people into an area, should always be of a concern. I understand the difference between the two, but I do think that should be something that should be relevant in this discussion. So with that, I personally will be looking at retaining the fifty-meter pool in its present location. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have comments?
Just two very quick comments. I wanted to follow up with a comment that Alderman Hancock mentioned, and I don't want anybody to walk away and think that we're downsizing or basically degrading the quality of that pool up there. That is absolutely not the comments that I made, or I don't think that was intended by everyone. I guess the appropriate way to say is, the pool itself, the leisure pool, would be sized appropriate for the population that it serves. As far as I'm concerned, they deserve every amenity that they have at Parkview and also at Sioux Park. It's a question of how big does it need to be? And there again, that's for the experts, not myself to determine, but I will tell you that we absolutely need to basically make sure that they have every amenity that both the south and the west side have. The other thing, as far as the hydraulic floodway, keep in mind, there's a big difference between a hydraulic floodway and a hydraulic floodplain. Literally, the entire downtown Rapid City area is in a hydraulic floodplain. This building's in a hydraulic floodplain. We do not allow for building in the hydraulic floodway, never have. We haven't since the 1972 flood. But if you actually look at the flood maps in Rapid City, hydraulic floodplains encompasses about, really, about the middle-third of our community as it flows through. We have all kinds of development. There's all kinds of development that always occurs in the floodplain. Matter of fact, Deb actually mentioned when she used to swim down at Roosevelt, the old pool down at Roosevelt actually used to be right next to Rapid Crick, if you remember it, right next to it. So the location of the fifty-meter pool, if it does go at Roosevelt, would actually be tucked up parallel to the indoor Aquatics Center, so it would be quite a ways from the crick. With that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go to Eric Costello.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. For me, the problem with this decision is that it's difficult to make without professional concepts and accurate cost analysis. I would like to see some hard numbers as far as, you know, just how much will it cost to move the dirt at Horace Mann if we choose to put the fifty-meter pool and the leisure pool there? Is there a way that within the budget, we can structure that design so as to not take away the ball field there? And coupled with that, what would be the concept if we were to, what would be the cost if we were to split it up, as we've been talking, the fifty-meter pool at Roosevelt and the leisure at Horace Mann? And within that budget, what would that allow us? And those thoughts lead me to a question for Jason Green, if I may, Mr. President.
Jason, did you hear the question?
I haven't asked one yet.
Oh. I was going to say, I never did, but go ahead.
It's all the lead-up. Here's the punchline. So Jason, can we take money from 2012 funds that's not designated to a specific project and request conceptual designs?
Jason.
Well, I think that if you're going to go down that road, it has to be identified towards a specific project. So if the project is the fifty-meter pool, I think it would be permissible use of the funds to do feasibility studies in different locations. Keep in mind, though, that you have certain categories of funding that you've got to spend within, and we're going to have to track that pretty closely to make sure that we get the percentages correct at the end of the plan.
Okay, so we would be able to allot that money for design to a particular cost center for 2012?
I think it would be possible to do that, but I do think you need to identify a specific project that you're looking at for the locations.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Based on that information, my current thought is, I would be comfortable taking some money from our contingency fund and putting it to, you know, designating it for this project and designating it for conceptual designs, because to me, that would be a huge contingency. That would be like insurance against us making a decision based on, lack of a better phrase, insufficient information. So that's how I feel about it right now, and I will yield to the floor.
Thank you, Eric. Mayor.
Let me make a recommendation. That is, why don't you let us see if we can do something internally with staff, taking a look, just very preliminary, looking at the number of yards of dirt it would take to basically create a pad up there. I will tell you, our contingency for 2011 is right at $200,000. I don't see Robert here, but I will tell you that going through and actually having someone do the work up on both locations would probably burn through our entire contingency fund. And so my recommendation would be to see what we can do internally real quick. There again, we can do some rough layouts, we can do some rough, very rough calculations, and even make sure that both would even fit there.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go back to Eric Costello.
Thank you for letting me keep the floor, Mr. President. Just for clarification, I'm talking 2012 contingency.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not our budgetary contingency. Yeah, sorry for the lack of clarification on that. And I see a light from Jason Green, so Jason, just some clarification on that.
Go ahead.
I don't know that the council's given any direction to reserve any funding for contingency purposes. If you want to do that, I think you're going to need to do it across all three of your categories, but at this point, as drafted, the resolution does not include a contingency line item.
I understand. Thank you. And that made me lose my train of thought, so this time I'll yield.
Okay, we're, before we go to the second go-around here, questions from the committee. I know there's a few other people out in the audience that wanted to make a few comments. Are they still wanting to make those comments?
Hi, my name is Bob Sieve. I am a parent of one of, actually, two swimmers on Rapid City Racers. I am also a U.S. Swim Official, and I have officiated at virtually all the pools here in South Dakota. A couple of comments. Number one, if you look at Aberdeen's swim program, that's a community of what, 10,000 people? There's 130 kids swimming in that community. You look at Pierre, a town of 17,000 people, talking with the coach last weekend in Gillette, excuse me, two weeks ago in Gillette, there's 150 kids on the swim team. Rapid City is a sleeping giant when it comes to swimming. There are a lot of kids, if the program is promoted correctly, that could take advantage of a swimming program and benefit because of that. Second comment I'd like to make is, because we have, or I have run swim meets, every Second comment I'd like to make is, because we have, or I have run swim meets, every pool has certain design flaws. And I would encourage that, though it may be the best design that the architects and the engineers come up with, if you're running a meet, there are things that are shortcutted that really wouldn't cost much if the pool is laid out properly with proper deck space and things located in the proper location that would make everyone's life who run a meet much, much easier. So I would encourage you that there are a couple of swim officials here in the city that, when it comes to the final layout and the design, please touch base to see if there are, I would volunteer to put in my comments on the design from a runability standpoint. That's all.
Thank you. Further comments? Todd?
Thank you. Putting both the lap pool and the leisure pool up at Horace Mann would eliminate a duplication of mechanics, snack, bar, equipment that you're going to have to have down at Roosevelt, because the pool you have there is using the facilities completely, I think has been mentioned already. You'll have to reinvent the wheel down there. The economies of size up at Horace Mann will allow you to use the facilities for both of those, and the cost-saving, you eliminate the lap lanes, for one thing, on the leisure pool, because you've got a 50-meter lap pool right next door. The economies of that would free up probably more than enough money to relocate that ball field. As I've mentioned, there are at least two locations of unused ball fields in the same area that could be transformed, I think, for a lot less than a half million dollars. So, that's my rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wants to speak? Being none, I'll go back to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Mr. Cogger, I wanted to ask Alice McCoy a question.
Go ahead.
Hi, Allison. Thanks for all your work you do there in North Rapid.
Thank you.
Have you heard much discussion about that Pony League field from people with, you know, that you've been working with and talk?
Not the North Rapid civic people. The neighborhood, yeah, they like having it there.
They like it.
Those who have kids that go there just like those who have kids that swim.
Right. Okay. And then, because I haven't, you know, got any feedback about that, so I was wanting to see what you had learned on the streets. And then, I think, Mayor, did you say that changing that out would be about, time you took that out and put a new one in somewhere else would be about a half a million?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. If you were to start from scratch, by the time you put in, there again, I'll give you a good example. The ASI softball, we're looking at putting in two additional softball fields there for $1.2 million. That does not include parking, that does not include concession stands, that is strictly putting the fields in. So that'll give you an idea of what it costs to build a ball field. $1.2 million for two, half a million dollars, quite honestly, I was being very conservative. I'm not sure you could actually do it for that. By the time you bring the infrastructure and put the parking and everything else in.
Did we have a lease to the Pony League or some, for just another year, or what's?
We do have a lease. It does, it is up next year, is my understanding, and I'm going to go to Jerry, but my understanding is they have every intention of renewing that lease.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Because I, you know, I would love to keep both pools up there, it's just because of the amount of space. And it seems a little foolish if we're going to look in at $500,000 to replace that field to send it elsewhere. So, I, thank you.
All right. Shall I recognize Alderman dead Hancock?
Thank you, Erin. Just a couple of things. For one, I think the baseball field has significance up there, because same with the North Rapid, the Horace Mann pool has, for some people, so does the baseball field. So, to spend more money to take that out and put a lap pool, I think you're going to have the same issues you had with Horace Mann, with people saying that it's kind of a thing that's been a memento up there for a long time. So, if we only have room for a leisure pool up there unless you take the baseball field, you need to think about that unless you're going to take and just put a lap pool up there. I think the cost savings, if you're thinking of a business plan, makes sense, because the leisure pool gets people that are family-oriented, not that both don't, but it's a place where kids can go play, have fun, and the lap pool for Horace Mann makes sense, because if I'm correct, and maybe I could ask Jerry this, you have the infrastructure that's already there for the boilers and the other things that were there to be put in, I'm sorry, Roosevelt, I'm confusing them, at Roosevelt. Do we have the infrastructure that was put in for a lap pool there, Jerry?
Jerry?
Thank you, Ms. President. Not for the pool, for an extra building.
Okay. I thought you had put it, when we talked to him, that he had had it for the lap pool as well, that you had sufficient room for like the boilers and the different things that you had to extend this. So maybe?
We have excess boilers, HVAC systems, but those are for building requirements, not an outdoor pool.
Okay. So if we didn't build anything on, we could use it for the lap pool? If we didn't do a fieldhouse or adult senior center?
The only thing you might be able to get away with is more hot water, but that'd be a stretch. You'd still have to put in boilers for, I don't know how many gallons of water that takes a 50-meter pool, but you'd still have to have some more boilers for that pool to heat it.
Okay. I guess, bottom line is, it seems like we have three acres to put a leisure pool in one area, and if we wanted to put a baseball field and relocate it somewhere else, we could do that and put a lap pool and spend another half million. Am I correct? Up at Horace Mann area?
And would you repeat that?
You have three acres to build a leisure pool, am I correct? And you don't have enough room, because you need more room, which would have to take the baseball field to put a lap pool up by Horace Mann.
If you wanted to build a full-size leisure pool and a 50-meter pool, you would have to probably take out the baseball field, because you still, what happens is that now you need more parking, because you've got both facilities up there. You can't have all three facilities up there and not have any parking.
Okay. Thank you. I guess what I'm looking at is what is the best business plan for this pool? It seems like the bottom line, when we first, five of us talked about this, it made sense to put the leisure pool up there with the lap pool at Roosevelt, just because they had already had the infrastructure there, it was good to go, they had the area to put it in, they also had enough parking for it, which would make a cost savings to the taxpayers as well, as it just made sense not taking out the baseball field at that point. To me, it's about the money in some senses, because the taxpayers are paying for this, but it's also about what this means to the community for North Rapid and Roosevelt area and what that would do. And it seems to me you could use the Roosevelt Park Swim area for the summer, it seems to make more sense. They do have all the amenities and the facilities that was talked about for food and beverage and everything else, and bathrooms and different stuff, so that would also save some money for building some of that as well. I don't know. My bottom line is it just seems like it makes, it's a good business plan to put the lap pool by Roosevelt and the Horace Mann area for the leisure. I think the community over there would be pleased with that. I think you would find that it would be more of a community-type facility in the Roosevelt Park area, and it wouldn't be just a North Rapid thing for the lap pool. I think that is for the community. It's not, it's not a North Rapid thing, it's a community pool. So, and I do believe that that leisure pool's going to be awesome in the Horace Mann area. I think it would work. So, that cost altogether, is Jerry Cole here, for those two, was 4.8? Five million?
4.5.
Okay. Do we need a motion, or do we have to, are we taking more comment? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate everyone showing up tonight. And I appreciate the swimmers' position on this pool. We want a pool, we understand the benefit of getting this pool, and I agree with you. I think that, and I'm an advocate for youth activities in our community, I'm a huge baseball, softball fan, which probably some of you know. And the one thing I got to mention, and I'm neutral on whether, where this pool goes, I think we've decided that the pool's going to go in. I think the mayor gave in a presentation that is really going to show the constraints on putting a leisure pool and a 50-meter pool in the same area. I'm open to looking at some conceptual drawings. There's been some mention of architectural and ingenierial designs, and being on the council for three years, I've noticed one thing. And when, left to their own vice, devices, the architects and engineers will miss the opportunities to make it right, to make it work properly. So I'm hoping that when, as we go forward with this, is that we do invite these swim coaches and the swim teams and the people in the community to give their advice on what really makes this thing user-friendly. So I think going forward, I hope that we keep those in our voices and our minds. Removing the baseball field, I think having talks of that tonight kind of disappoints me a little bit, because there was a presentation from several people, probably as many of you that are sitting here, from the baseball pony field that came forward. Their project died, and for the lack of, I think, the city's direction on the fact that we didn't know what we were going to do with the pool and those things, and we were willing to help them move forward. There was comments earlier about, you know, asking for funds and those types of things to bring some needed repairs to that field. And I guarantee you that as this goes forward, and these people will be back, they'll be looking for some repairs for the field in that area there. It's kind of cool to have a little baseball field in your community. You know, you got, just in the short period of time I sat here thinking of people, Dave Collins, Mark Ellis, Dick Green, all who've made, put Rapid City on the map, just as baseball players themselves. And I think the short change, the baseball players, because they're not here tonight, is inappropriate for one, and I do think that that field is nice and it can be rebuilt for the neighborhood. I understand that, and then there's another person that's not being represented here tonight, and that's the person, as Alderman Hancock had alluded to earlier, the person that's going to use the leisure pool. There's probably hundreds of them in comparison to the people that will literally use the 50-meter pool. Now, with that being said, and one of the fellows here mentioned the potentials for the usage of a 50-meter pool. And one of the things that I realize when you're in sports, one of the things you do is you promote sports to get other people to join your sport, whether it's swimming or whatever it is. If you're connected with the swim center, what a better opportunity for people who don't even know that a 50-meter pool even exists in this town, when it's sitting right next to them, they're swimming with their family, those types of things. It's an opportunity, all of a sudden, you've got a swim meet there, and you've got kids that are just swimming with their families, they're looking over going, wow, what's going on over there? I mean, it's an opportunity to build your sport in the community from, I think someone had mentioned 75 swimmers, somebody mentioned 100, I'm not sure, it's probably somewhere in between, to, you know, I think girls' softball in this community started out with 30 or 40. There are several hundred now, and part of that process went through by introducing themselves to adults who were in the community, showing them what they could do. So I think there's opportunities, if it was attached to the swim center. Like I said, I'm neutral on it, I'm open to see if there's, you know, a way to make them both fit. I don't know if that would be the most appropriate thing to do. It eliminates parking and those types of things, and it also eliminates the potential of your sport. I mean, if you expose yourself to way more kids in the community, I think you're going to have a better opportunity to grow your sport. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Gary Brown, I think is the only other one that hasn't spoken, so Gary, go ahead, then we're going to move this on here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point now, I'd like to make sure that I am correct in the way I've been doing the figure, just how much money do we have now with the other commitments we made? How much money do we have right now to be working with?
We're just going through that. I believe as we build, you have it. Mr. Wa, you want to give that dollar amount?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Without figuring in a contingency fund, if we just go with what dollars we have left, we have $5,693,000. Without anything on the fieldhouse, $5,693,000. If you were to throw in a 10% contingency fund, that would get that down to about $2,000,000.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else? Anything else, Gary?
No.
Okay. Okay, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, Alderman Wa is exactly right, but keep in mind, the $4.5 million for both pools is already accounted for.
Right.
So what you're talking about is, and the city council has already approved both the leisure pool and the lap pool, that was $4.5 million, so the dollar amount that he was talking about is above and beyond what is projected to be used for the two pools. So that is what's left.
Thank you. All right, with that, we don't have any other lights, and there was no other speaker request for him, so I'm going to open this up for the discussion we've already been having between council members of what action do you want to take tonight? With that, if you have any comments, turn your light on. We'll go to Bill Wa.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I stated, we've got $5,693,000, and I was the council member that has been pushing all along for a 10% contingency fund, which would be used, as Mr. Costello brought up, for some of these projects, we have to do a little bit more investigation. So we could use some of that $3.3 million to check and look into what would be best for the Horace Mann area, whether we put the lap pool and the leisure pool together, what are the soil types, and compare that with an analysis of the Roosevelt Park area. So if you would take that $3.3 million out of the monies left to form a contingency fund, we would have, like I said, 2.0, I think, Gary, we have 2.0, almost 2.4 million. So now we're talking about funding a Roosevelt Park fieldhouse and an adult social center, resource center, and folks, we don't have the money to do that. We don't have it, because we've already committed to these other projects, and the only way we could fund, if we start at the top, we could fund the Roosevelt Park fieldhouse, but to do that, we would have to take most of the money out of the contingency fund to do that. So that's where we're at, dollars and cents-wise. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
I think one correction, though, is I think our last recommendation for the fieldhouse was $3 million.
Right.
So it would leave $2.6 million, $2.7 million still in contingency fund.
Yep. And then, if we have overruns in some of the previously approved ones, or if we use funding like Mr. Costello said, it doesn't take long to eat up that contingency fund. So, thank you.
Further comments from the committee? Bonnie Peterson?
Thank you. I would much rather try to give the Adult Social Resource Center time to keep meeting, because we would still have some money that we could help with their project, I think, after the pool or with the pool, that it's the more important project. And so I would be, like to hold on to that money in hopes that they can come together and bring forth a project that everyone feels comfortable with, even though we don't have the full amount now, but just like we could have overages, we could have some underages and to save that money for that. And... And so I would, um, anyway, I guess I would make a motion for, uh, for that, uh, set aside the contingency fund and, um, just hold on to the extra money and give the Adult Social Resource Center time to come up with a better plan.
Okay, if I understand your motion is to put basically $3.3 million in contingency fund and to not approve any project to allow, uh, Adult Social Resource Center to continue to work on their project? Is that what I'm hearing? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Bill Wa.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I know where you're coming from, um, Bonnie, but if we, if we do that, we have to have the fieldhouse in place to attach the Adult Social Center to. So I think we're getting the cart before the horse. I think we have to decide, number one, whether we build the, the fieldhouse and then look at the funding that is left and, and decide whether we want a contingency fund, which I will continue to support because I know how 2012 funding runs, and we, we have overruns. Very seldom do we have underruns. So I can't support the motion because I think we need to decide as a council whether we're going to spend any funds on the Roosevelt Fieldhouse first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We'll go to Deb Hadcock.
Is this on this motion?
Yes.
Um, I still think there's merit in a, um, one-stop, um, shopping area, basically not one-stop shopping, but one-stop, um, center. There's merit in doing the fieldhouse, and there's merit in putting the Adult Social Center with it. I think in a combination, um, you do have a multipurpose area in the, um, fieldhouse that can be used for, um, the two most important things. It seems like that is talked about is the Daisy House and the Mills program. It seems like those two things could be added to the fieldhouse. And then in five years, with their five-year business plan, add more. But at least start by giving two important, um, parts of that Adult Social Center and quit calling it a senior center issue and help the Daisy House and help the Mills program. How we combine that and put it in the multipurpose, it seems like there can be, um, some type of combination between the two to make that happen. If we did the fieldhouse and just, um, requested that they work with them to do the multipurpose room into, um, somewhat of the, uh, keep having brain fart through Daisy House and Mills program. So, um, I'm into helping the seniors in those two programs. I think that are very important. I'm also, uh, think the fieldhouse is good, but it also, people talked about repeat services in the, uh, Adult Social Center. There's also many repeat services in the fieldhouse. So, um, there's merit in both those projects moving forward. I'm not into just doing the Adult Social Resource Center or just the fieldhouse. I still think the best for the taxpayers of Rapid City to help, um, both the kids and the adults in this, this, uh, issue would be to put both in, in one. So if that can happen, um, and how that happens, I don't know. But like I said, they did put a multipurpose room in the fieldhouse, and that could be used, um, to start the Daisy program there and maybe some of the Mills programs.
We'll go to Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask that, uh, I believe as chairman, you have the ability to call for a division of the question or grant a division of the question. As I understand this motion, there are two distinct parts to it. One is to have a 10% contingency, and the other is to put the, uh, entire Adult Resource Center funding into the contingency fund. And I would ask for a division of the, of the question so that we can discuss both and vote on both pieces separately, please.
I believe that would be appropriate. So, uh, with that, Jason, we need to take that vote right now? Or how do we do that?
Typically, the question is divided through a vote. Well, I think the way to do it would be to offer a motion to divide and then vote on whether you divide the question or not.
Okay, and that's your motion, Sam. Do we have a second?
Secondary.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to divide the question, discussion on that motion. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So now the floor is, or we go back to the first one, in which is going to be a 10%, 10% contingency of $3,693,000. Discussion, do we have to have a motion for that, or is that already on the table?
I believe you could deem that the motion's already on the table since you have divided the question that was presented. And just for clarification, I believe that the 10% contingency is going to have to be divided among the three categories according to the percentages outlined in the, in the ordinance. So 50% for municipal infrastructure and 25% each for civic improvements and economic development.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Okay, I, I, what I'm hearing is, is the contingency dollar amount would be $3,260,000 is what it should be. Okay. Discussion on the motion. Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Chairman, and, uh, thank you, Alderman Wa, for bringing this forward. I think it is absolutely imperative as the council that we continually plan ahead for, as you eloquently stated, uh, possible overruns that may and possibly likely will occur. So I am in full support of having a contingency fund to look forward and plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie, did you have comment on this motion? Okay, then I'll go to Deb Hadcock.
By dividing this question, I guess my light was on earlier, but dividing this question, what you're saying is basically there isn't any money to fund the other projects. So that's the bottom line. Because you only have, how much left? If you have contingency at 3.26, how much is left, Kroger?
2.4.
So you have no money left to fund unless you're going to use a contingency. So if you want to save the 10%, that gives you no money to fund the other projects. Just so you all know that. So if you vote on this and then want to keep the contingency in there, you have no money. So I guess that's why I wanted to talk. I didn't want to vote on that because I would have said no. Because at that point, you've just divided a question and answered your own question for the next two things on the fieldhouse and the social center. So, um, no offense, but, um, I would have said no on the last question.
Further comments? We'll go to Ron Waferbacher.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we have a 10% contingency, that leaves us 2.4, 2.433 million, so it doesn't, yeah, to build the fieldhouse or the Adult Social Center, so it doesn't finish either one of those projects. So, um, just to let everyone know that before they vote. Thank you.
Further comments? Bonnie Peterson.
I was wondering if we could perhaps, um, I'd make a substitute motion that we perhaps discuss the other two programs before we vote on the contingency fund.
Motion on the floor is to, uh, use a 10% contingency. I don't think there, uh, that's open for discussion on these other two projects at this point. Right. Further comment? Everyone is aware of the motion? I don't, everyone understands the motion? Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I almost hate to bring this up at any point, certainly not now, but I, I think we have an elephant in the room that we need to at least, I, we at least need to acknowledge that it's out there. Although I totally agree with the fact that we need to have a contingency fund for all the reasons that have been laid out, and we know that they're very valid reasons and most likely will have overruns. There's a considerable amount of money from round three that has not been used. Some of it has been allocated and will be used. Some of it simply has not been used because of, of the timing of projects. They're, they're in the works and, and they, they will be used. But quite frankly, there's some of them that I think we need to, to be honest with ourselves. How long are we going to leave those dollars allocated from five years ago sitting there? Are they in not, are they not in fact a contingency fund today of sorts? They're not allocated as such, but, I mean, I'm looking at two different projects that account to about $4.6 million that are making no progress, no headway. That funds an awful lot of the things that we're talking about tonight, including a contingency fund. Now, it's painful to talk about them. We've got to tell somebody that we've told yes, that they didn't do what they were supposed to do, and we're now going to tell them no. But by the same token, how long are we going to leave that money sitting there? I think it's important that we at least acknowledge that those dollars exist and quit hiding behind the curtain when it comes to those $4.6 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Further comments? We'll go to Deb Hadcock.
Um, Kroger, what would it be if we put 3.433 and had a contingency of 2.26? What would that percentage drop, or maybe Mr. Wa would know? So our contingency would be 2.26 and our other total will be 3.4. Contingency right now is 3.26, 3,200.
You want it 3 million, too?
Now I want it 2.260.
2 million?
Yep.
600,000?
Six and a half percent, around 6,000.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I don't believe it's necessary to identify your contingency in terms of a percentage. If you have a specific dollar amount you'd like assigned to that, I think that works just as well.
Okay.
What did we have in contingency last time? Does anybody know for 2012?
None.
So at this point, we could, we could do 3.433, which is 3,433,000, and put that, and we could still do the fieldhouse or the Adult Social. And then the 2.26 at six and a half percent still leaves us at a contingency. So I would make a substitute to put six and a half percent or 200, what was it, 200 and, say it again.
2.6.
2.6 in the, for the contingency. So we'd have 3.433 for the regular. So that would be my substitute.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to, to change the dollar amount to 2.6 million in contingency. Is there a second to that motion?
2.0.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, to put 2.6 million in contingency. Discussion on that motion. Bill Wa.
2.26.
I think the dollar amount that Deb's referring to is 2,260,000. Yes.
Okay, clarify the motion. The motion was, substitute motion was to put 2,260,000 in contingency.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we do it? And that was what the secondor understood?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion on that motion? Discussion. Eric Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I would just like a rundown again. I apologize. I forgot to write down what the total number of dollars that we have available right now.
$5,693,000.
Which leaves us 3,433,000.
Correct.
I have a question for Alderman Hadcock, if she's willing to, uh, to answer.
Go ahead.
Alderman Hadcock, could you tell me again your, your thought process here? Sort of why the 2.26 million in contingency leaving the 3.4 left over?
Deb Hadcock.
Well, at this point, it sounds like that we want some contingency. We had none last time, so that makes sense in case anybody has any overruns at this point. And, um, the social center, or the fieldhouse was like 3 million. And it seems like at this point, we had people coming back, working very hard to, to come forward to bring their projects, whether it be the Adult Social Center or the Roosevelt Park Fieldhouse. I'd hate to shut down projects at this point when we have still some type of contingency to help us and still be able to, uh, move forward on, uh, projects, or at least one more project for our community, so.
So if I understand correctly, what you want to do is basically with these three projects we have in front of us, leave enough money to choose one, to fund one?
No, at this point, we have money for the leisure pool and the tank pool at 4.5 million.
Oh, right, that's already allotted. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay, and so that would leave 3.433, um, for either the Adult Social or the Fieldhouse, and then it would leave a contingency of 2.260.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. I yield.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion. Jordan Mason.
Thank you. Actually, I wanted to ask a, a question that, uh, is related actually to a comment made directly before this motion, but actually ties into it to Alderman Davis. And just to make sure that the figures we're talking about are correct at 5.693,000, or I'm sorry, 5,693,000. You also mentioned, um, Mr. Davis, uh, 4.6 million and two other projects that have been unused. And I, I just want to make sure I was, I wrote that number down correctly? Is that correct?
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, what I'm showing of unused projects right now, and it's probably not fair to pick on any one or two, what I'm showing right now is of the round three projects, there are, one, two, three, four, five. There are eight different projects that have not utilized all of their funds to the tune of $16,161,560. Now, some of those will use those funds. Some of those have been bid. They just, the jobs just haven't been done and paid for. Some of those projects have not. And I don't know that it's, it's fair to say which ones will or won't. I'm just saying, I, I think it's, it is fair to say, I think we need to ask the question. Some of these are five years old, and how long are we willing to continue? Are we going to wait another five years and have these four or five or $16 million sitting here doing nothing? So I think that's, that's the fairness of it, is to, to approach the fact that there are monies that have been allocated five years ago that have not been spent.
If I may ask one other additional question, the reason I'm asking this is, is really to put the current motion into the context of, of really the framework that we're dealing with at the current time. And I, I agree full-heartedly, um, Alderman Davis, that it's, it's important to talk about the facts and what it is and what it, you know, what we're really dealing with. Out of those projects that are five years old or plus, um, do you know what the dollar amount of those are that are over five years that have unused funds? All of them? Okay, just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Okay, the motion on the floor is to take 2.2, $2,260,000 and put that dollar amount into contingency. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next item, and, and that was for, um...
To continue the, the projects to allow them more time.
Right, the 3 million, $433,000 basically will sit there in contingency also until, until the Social Services comes up with something else?
Mr. President, actually, in the resolution, I will show that money as being uncommitted.
Uncommitted?
Yes, so it's, so it's clear that it's not a part of the contingency. It's uncommitted, and you still have, uh, two projects out there that you're considering. It's uncommitted, and you still have two projects out there that you're considering.
Okay, discussion on that motion. Bonnie Peterson.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, to the response of they need the field house to build the Adult Resource Center, I mean, I think that is a good location for it, but after some of the presentations that were made today, I don't know necessarily that it has to be at the field house, that it could possibly be at another location. And so I just wanted, instead of awarding it, I just felt it was best to give the seniors and the Adult Resource and the Daisy House, Mills and Wheels, all of those groups, an opportunity to maybe work together a little longer to see if they could come up with something that we thought was feasible. So that's why I made the motion. Thank you.
Further comments, Sam Quaker. Will go to Ron Weifbach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I mentioned I did attend a couple of the meetings that evolved around the senior centers themselves, and I think that it's important that we support the seniors in the community, but I think it's also important that they drive the project. I mean, all the 2012 projects, most of them have been driven by individuals bringing forward requests. You know, it's been mentioned that, you know, the Minna Luson versus the Canyon Lake, whatever. I don't think that that's what I think it's actually migrating towards, but I do want to hand it to the people that actually put this project together and tried to bring something forward. And I felt somewhat in the position that maybe they were getting executed as the messengers, and I don't want to see that happen. I think that it's, the seniors in our community are very important to our community. And I went back and with, and looked at a couple of the forward proposals in here, and there was definite proposals that said that, you know, they were going to merge the senior centers and those things. If you read the original proposals that came forward, and I don't think that's necessarily where the project's migrating towards now. There've been mentioning about, you know, the other organizations not concerned about the seniors or whatever that case may be, but understanding that the Minna Luson is the people that brought this thing forward. That's how this thing got started, from the application that the council has in front of us. That's where the project started. I'm for giving more time to vet this project, but I'm not for eternity. I think that some of these projects that we mentioned up here earlier have been going on for eternity. And I'm, and as the project migrates, I don't have a problem with that, as it migrates towards another position. And I think that it's, after having some conversations with both the senior centers and getting the people who really make things happen in that area together, I think that if they continue to do that, and there's some sort of a timeframe for them, I think that there might be a good possibility that they can identify the real needs of that section of our community. And it's really nice to sit up here after three years and see so many seniors come up and voice their opinions and talk to the council and give us the feelings and their positions, because I haven't seen that in three years that I've been here. So again, I'm going to hand some kudos out to the people that started this application, and it's actually transforming, and I could support pulling off and giving more time to vet the project, but you definitely don't want us up here making those decisions for you. I think it's important, as I talked at the Canyon Lake Center, that you folks move this project forward, or you don't, one or the other. I think there's some people involved in the Daisy House that have resources that maybe want to get with some other people and see what makes the most sense. I think it's a good project moving forward, and it's migrating in the right direction, but I don't want it to go on for eternity. So I'm for letting this time lapse and make sure, see if we can get it right, but I'm not for waiting for eternity, as we have on some of these other projects that, in my mind, I think a couple of them are going to have serious moving forward issues. I mean, there was promises made that aren't transpiring, there's been no progress. I think if we go forward, if we put a timeframe on this, I can support it. Whatever the timeframe may be, would be, I guess, up to our council or up to the people who want to vet the project forward, but I don't want it to go on for eternity, so that's my feelings. Thank you.
Jordan.
Go ahead.
Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment and say I also really welcomed the concept that the Adult Resource Center is addressing. I've stated it before, and I think at this time, not only, especially in Rapid City, but it is a developing problem across our nation that as people just like my parents who are actually a part of the baby boomer generation are getting older, it is an increasing concern that we need to address as a society. And I'm happy to see that that concern is being addressed in a very thoughtful and well, in a thoughtful way. And I think that solutions can develop, and it sounds like those solutions and a lot of the answers to some of the obstacles that you're facing today are beginning to be answered. And I look forward to hearing more of those answers and seeing the fruition of this idea. But unfortunately, it has sounded like there are still some small issues to work out, and I guess that's also why I am in support of giving more time for the continued progress of this idea. I think it's an important issue to address, and I'm happy to see that it's being addressed. Thank you.
Further comments, Deb Hadcock.
I guess I'll just reiterate this. I think the field house can work with a couple of the things of the Adult Social Center. I think you're going to get more bang for your buck. You can't do one's four and one's 4.8. I know in the field house, they had a multipurpose room. Some of this can be combined with the two to make this project work. We have 3.4 million, and I would advise, if we could, the two to work together. I don't think you need to vet one against the other. I still believe that these two projects can work together, because some are duplicated areas. You don't have to have Minna Luson against the Canyon Lake. What you do is find with those two senior centers, a program that could work in the field house area. When you do that, you'll have a combined effort for stuff that both need, and then there's not so much of a contentious issue. It makes sense, again, because there's the Daisy House that works for both and the Mills program that works for both. So I think, I would hope that, again, you have 3.4 million that the Adult Social Center could get with Jerry Cole and figure out something to do with the 3.4 that would make sense for the senior community or the adult community, whatever they're trying to hit with that field house. So I'm in favor of keeping this money to something that makes sense for us. I don't think at this time, I feel this council's not wanting to vet one against the other. We think they're both good, but I haven't heard anything that makes sense except for combining them. Because again, you've got two senior places that are awesome. You would need a Daisy House, and you need a Mills program, and maybe a couple other things, and you can put that together and make a great field house and call it a field house with an Adult Social Center system with it. So I don't know how you do that, or if you just tell them to work together, but it seems like it'd make more sense.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to take 3,433,000 and put that into uncommitted 2012 funds, and to allow the Adult Social Resource Center to, some time to rework their project and bring it forward again. Is that correct? Further discussion on that motion, Ron Weifbach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would we, can we attach a timeframe to that? Is there?
I would like to add a timeframe, if you're willing to do that.
Four months, six months? I'm not sure what the rest of the council would feel comfortable with. Three months?
Three months?
So we have, I'm comfortable with three months.
So, friendly amendment, three months, which would mean that they need to bring this back to the council, let's say, the first, yeah, actually, the middle of March should give them, basically, by the second meeting in March, second council meeting in March.
Mr. President, is there any particular information that we'd like to have them have? I guess that would be probably helpful with just maybe bringing all the players to the table.
Will go to Bill Waugh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think they got a good start, and I think that the Daisy House program and the Mills on Wheels is a fantastic program, but I think there are other senior entity or entities out there that deal with the seniors and the baby boomers that are coming forward. And if they would pattern themselves similar to the mental health collaboration and bring as many entities together, so if we do at some point in time in the future fund a building or a facility, that we would be housing something that would be a one-stop-shop location for seniors. That's my vision. I might be entirely wrong, but that's what I, that's what I foresee for Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, everyone understands the motion on the floor. Further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Last item on the agenda is to direct staff to repair the necessary resolution, Jason, based on the action we took our last two 2012 meetings, we took that directly to city council, did we not? We did not take this to legal and finance?
I don't remember if it went through legal and finance last time, however, there is a resolution amending the plan on the legal and finance agenda. I can include these changes that you've identified today as a part of that and update that link.
Okay, so we really need, don't need to take any action on this item?
I think you did with the votes that you took today, so I think you can adjourn.
Anything else needs to be brought up in this meeting? Ron Weifbach.
Mr. President, I don't think we addressed the pools. I think we talked about it, but I don't think we really addressed the direction that we wanted to give. I think the mayor admitted, he had made a suggestion that his staff would look at, first look at the possibilities of whether there was enough room and if, kind of go from there, I guess. I guess I'd make the motion to take the mayor's recommendation to have the city staff look at, see what kind of physical constraints were put on that property and decide.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to have staff look at the Horace Mann site and see what the ability is to put both pools in that site.
Sure. Yeah, but what we'll try news, we'll try and get some, there again, very preliminary, we'll look at the actual footprints of both, a leisure pool and a lap pool, take a look at, in order if we have to fit it in, what kind of fill we'd have to do and so forth, what kind of costs associated. I think there's a good chance we might have at least some kind of report probably by next Monday night.
Thank you, Mayor. Further comments, Eric Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the mayor offering that. I think that's a fantastic use for our staff. And just for clarification, I did some numbers on Rapid Map using the fancy area select tool to figure out the acres at Park View and Horace Mann. And Park View has been described as about three acres. From my calculation, it's about 2.18, and that's including all the green space and the three outbuildings. And then, specific to the pool itself, that area, including the three, the three outbuildings, and also the area of the pool is all the concrete immediately surrounding the pool and the three buildings associated with it, that is 1.04 acres. And so then, when the Horace Mann area, through looking at the contours and choosing what seems, you know, an initial response as a, as a buildable area, I got 2.37 acres of buildable area, and that includes the current tank pool and the picnic shelter and playground, but not the parking lot or the ball field. And just for additional information, the 50-meter pool itself takes up .69 acres, which leads 1.68 additional acres for whether it be a warm-up thing like Mr. Green talked about and the leisure area. So it does seem, at least on initial look here, that there is area for the recreation aspect. Parking is always an issue. From my initial look here, a spot with 39 spaces takes up about .3 acres, and it looks like adjacent to there, in between Minna Man Drive and Anamosa is a pretty good area that's flat. It comprises about, or it's flat-ish, it comprises approximately .55 acres. And so, I'm quick with the, quick with the numbers here. So just give us optimism here. I mean, it really seems that it really, it could fit in this area, that is a fantastic area for a pool. So I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. You should look at becoming an engineer. Jordan Mason.
Well, on that note, Mr. President, as a fellow minds person, I want to thank Alderman Costello for bringing that forward, because I think if we do look at this, I think it is clear that there are options to make this the best possible outcome. And as I've stated before, I think that as being in the location that serves the entrance to the cityway, that its current location not only serves Rapid City as a whole, but also provides something for the northern part of Rapid City to also serve that neighborhood and the city as a whole. And I look forward to looking at that report following next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion on the floor to also bring forward an estimate on what it would cost to have an independent engineering firm do a study of Horace Mann Park to see if both pools could, could fit without removing the ball field. That's to be, that'd be an amendment, no?
Just an amendment to the motion?
Bring forward an estimate. Bring forward, bring forward an estimate to see what it would cost to have an independent engineering firm do a study on what it would cost to, to put both pools in Horace Mann Park. One more time, I'm asking for an amendment to the motion on the floor to bring forward an estimate of what it would cost to have an outside engineering firm do a study to see if we could fit both pools in Horace Mann.
Does that, to follow what you're trying to do, Sam, then do we really need staff to go out and take a look at this thing?
Yes, we'd like to do, I'd like to do, I'd like to do both. I'd like to see what it would cost and also have an independent.
Let's, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mayor Hanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. There again, just a recommendation, I think the easiest thing to do is, I don't think there's anything wrong with that motion, but I think give the staff a week to take a look at it, because quite honestly, there's a couple of things that are going to limit it. There again, the footprint of two pools, plus the required parking by our own parking ordinances. It'd be pretty easy, within a short timeframe, to even get an idea of whether either, whether they'll even both fit there or not. I mean, that, you don't need to go out and do engineering studies, you can literally draw it out and say, does it fit? And if it does, then I think it'd be appropriate to go out and do an engineering study to see what it would cost to actually bring everything up to grade, because the entire site's about nine acres, but about three acres of that is unusable, because it's a pretty steep slope, so. There again, I think that within the week, I think we can, we can put it, like I say, put the footprints in, see how much parking we're going to need, see if it'll even fit. And if it doesn't fit, then why go through the exercise?
Further comments on the amendment? Deb Hadcock.
I'm not opposed to that in one sense, but I think you ought to let staff, who has engineers that we pay, to do this first. And if it doesn't make sense, then do the independent study. I mean, why would you spend extra money at this point to see if that happens? That's what they get paid for with the city, and I think we have enough professional engineers to get that job done without having to do an independent study and cost the taxpayers more money on something at this point that we should get a, at least a basis of if it even would work. And I think our staff is very capable of doing that, instead of, again, paying taxpayers or using more taxpayer dollars out of the 2012 to get that done. If, I think the staff comes back with a get that done. If, I think the staff comes back with a sensible proposal, and it comes back and says, wow, we think we can do that, I think it makes total sense to go in and have an maybe independent contract and, and do some different things with this. But I think, first of all, let staff come back and see what they come back with, and then, if we need to move forward with this recommendation, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. But it does make sense at this point to see what staff says. They've been dealing with this a long time, and I think they know this area and can come back and be fully capable of doing this themselves.
Further comments, Erin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate those comments by all the women, Hancock. And I, I believe that what I viewed as the intent of the motion and what Mayor Hanks said weren't quite the same. I'm looking for the data on, well, I'll put it this way. Mayor Hanks said that we're going to see just physically what can fit there. And that I'm in favor of. I, I think that, that's, that needs to be done. And then, secondary to that, we need a study on how much it's going to cost to get that done. So, I don't feel right now that the, the amendment contradicts the first motion. I feel it's more of a piggyback. The staff is going to look at it, say, yes, this physically can fit based on requirements, or no, it physically cannot fit based on requirements. And then, if it can fit, we come forward, we, we get an estimate on what the, the design fee would be for such a project. And I, we're not losing anything with that, at least I don't think. I'm looking forward to being enlightened by my fellow council members if, if I've overlooked something.
Alderman Costello, I guess, I get, the question in my mind is if we're going to have our staff go out and see if it fits, and the answer is no, it does not fit, why would we hire an independent engineering firm to tell us what it would cost to make it fit?
Right. See, we're not talking about, this is not the action of hiring right now. This is simply learning the figure that, that staff estimates it would cost for the design. Unless, I'm confused.
Sam, do you want to clarify what your intent was on your amendment?
My, my, my intent is to, is to, is to, in addition to proceeding with, with staff taking a look at this, is to, is to bring forward an estimate on what it would cost to have an outside firm also take a look at whether or not we could fit two pools in Horace Mann Park. And I think, I think it's very important that we do this, because I want to make, you know, this is a very, very important decision, and I, I think that we should see if it's possible to have another, have an independent look at it, because what we do here is going to have consequences for decades down the road. And the memo that we have here says Horace Mann Park is approximately nine acres in size, and in comparison, the Sioux Park Leisure Pool by itself is three acres. Well, Alderman Costello uses engineering skills to figure it out, and the footprint of the, and Rapid Map, and the footprint of the leisure pool at, at Roosevelt Park is 0.94 acres. It's not three acres. The three acres includes all the green space and all the other facilities there. And so, I, I just want to make sure that we're proceeding judiciously, because this is an important decision, and I don't think it hurts at all to find out what it would cost to have an independent look. Thank you.
I, I understand your motion now. We're just asking to go out basically for bids to what it's going to cost to do a, a study, okay? There's no cost in going out to do that. So, I guess in my mind, it certainly makes sense. Further discussion on that motion, or on the amendment? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with two noes, three noes, which would be Mr. Davis, Ms. Hancock, and Gary Brown. Okay, now we're back to the original motion as amended. Further discussion on that motion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Just one comment before we do. The next step in this process is going to be, is the subcommittee will get together, look at how we divide these into the three categories for funding, and at some point in time down the road, we will be deciding how, when each project is funded. So, that will be coming up. All in favor of adjourning? Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.